I'd like to call and order the Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, October 4th, 2017. And with that, I'd like everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Repeat after. Chairman O'Rourke. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And with that, with the City Planner, please call the roll.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Rowland.
Here.
Commissioner Blackwell.
Here.
Commissioner Tally.
Here.
Commissioner Crandall.
Here.
Commissioner Wu.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
We show that Tally's absent.
Okay. We have a special order of business tonight. We have a presentation by Ms. Julia Darden on Pier Pride.
Thank you Chair Brown, Commissioners, and also City Planner Amber Gregg. We really appreciate you making this time for us tonight. Just to give you a little history on why we're here tonight, we had a stakeholders' meeting earlier this year, and we invited Chair Brown and then also Commissioner Crandall as Chair of Design Review to come and to provide some input along with other members of the community. And they suggested that it might be helpful for the Planning Commissioners to see some of the vision that our group is beginning to consider and perhaps give some input at this early date or just file it away and, you know, begin the thought process of looking at some of these things that we're suggesting for the pier. Just to give you an idea of who we are, several years ago, two prominent members of our community who tend to see problems and come up with solutions, Jim Nielsen, who happens to be here tonight, and a lady I think you know pretty well, Lori Duncheck, were walking on the beach trail, and when they got to the pier, they noticed that the quality of the pier had really deteriorated over the past few years, and they wanted to find a solution. So they founded our group. Amber, was the -- do I have a clicker? Okay, great, thank you. So at that time, they'd noticed that the pier experience had deteriorated, and the main cause of that is because our city -- oh, thank you. Our city, like cities all throughout the state, had lost RDA funds in 2012, which left a big gap between the quite large amount that the city spends every year, which is approximately $400,000 on average, and what the city really needed. The pier needed much more than that in order to be maintained properly. So our group was founded to work in partnership with the city and with other groups in the community in order to fill this gap. And while the city focuses on structural things, such as making sure those pylons are secure, we make sure that the experience that you have when you visit the pier is as good or better as it was the first time you visited the pier many years ago. Our goal is to come up with an endowment of $2 million and have that fund the pier in the future, and our organization would sunset. So the -- moved ahead a bit. The first major project that our group took on, and some of you might have noticed if you've walked the pier recently, was a professional painting of the pier. And it's the first professional painting in memory for even those of us who've lived in town for a very long time. A lot of well-meaning volunteers who were supplied with some latex paint went down every six to 12 months, and without having the wherewithal to prepare the pier, to rough it down the way we all do when we paint at home, they just painted right over the pigeon poop. So it lasted about six to 10 months. We purchased some very expensive paint. It's paint that's used on the USS Midway down in San Diego. It's lasted 10 years so far there, so we're hoping to get at least that out of it for our application on the pier. As we began to look -- whoa, this thing goes a little crazy. As we began to look at what do we do beyond the obvious of cleaning up the pier and painting, we decided that we could really benefit from some professional advice. The Planning Commissioners are probably all familiar with RSM Design, a group that's worked with the city on both pro bono projects and paid projects for a number of years, signage on the trolley, and those sorts of things. They're an internationally recognized firm. They work from Dallas to Dubai. And what they do is help do things just like this, help look at environments and help them be the best that they can be. The direction that we gave them was how might we enhance the pier, and the experience of visiting the pier with -- while still remaining true to the pier's history. That's very important. You know, we, like the rest of the community, don't want a big change. So you'll note that, of course, they've stayed very close to this, and you won't see anything crazy like a Ferris wheel or something totally out of character in the ideas that they presented. All of the services that they provided were donated, and this is really what we're going to look at tonight, all of the ideas that they presented to us. And I should say, actually, for the Commissioners who were at the last presentation, I should amend that, not all the ideas. I've cut this considerably from that presentation. So it's very important, both for the Commissioners and for those at home, to know that these are not proposed projects at this point. They're basically potential funding targets for us that need evaluation for feasibility, for desirability, and when projects are determined, those will go through the normal city approval So the presentation is divided into three sections. RSM looked at the pier in three different ways. They looked at the pier as the wooden structure itself, and what types of enhancements could we have for that section. They looked at a second zone, which came under the category of safe pier entry and green space, and then finally, an area that they termed the pier skirt and amenities. The pier enhancement section is one that I've cut quite a bit for tonight. There's some really exciting ideas in there, but they're not necessarily things that come under the purview of the Planning Commission. So we're going to concentrate mostly on Zone 2 and 3, but I did want to share very quickly a few of the more exciting enhancements they've suggested for Zone 1. So something that's important here to note, they made sure to look at the history of the pier so that we could stay true to it, and I want you to look at this image right here, and on this next page, this image here, and this image here. And as we look at Zone 2 and 3, I want you to keep that in mind, because this was the approach to the pier originally. So some of the things that they've suggested that we begin to take a look at is having better identity down at the pier. Up at the top left-hand corner, you'll see samples they've taken from around the state of, you know, interesting ways to express identity on the pier, and they've mocked up one such way that we might do it on our pier, adding our city SC logo to the bathroom wall. And you note that the way the wall looks today is a little less interesting and welcoming than on the mock-up that they've created. This is a very important aspect of the changes we want to bring to the pier. This is doubling the annual pier maintenance. Those of you who visit the pier often will see the guys down there in the orange vests. When they're on the payroll of Pier Pride, they're wearing a vest that has a donor's logo on the back. So we've doubled that following the suggestions of RSM. They've also suggested that we redo our interpretive and educational signage, the six signs that we have down there today, but also looking at other ways that we can add interpretive signage. For example, you'll notice here on the bathroom wall, they're suggesting that we use larger canvases for this, and we perhaps have more interactive signage that really involves the visitors to the pier in that signage and makes it a more engaging experience. They've also suggested that we have -- we replace our existing flagpole, which is not functioning properly, and then we also add banners along the pier that feature local artists. This is an interesting idea. While it's very important that our pier is a fishing pier, because that's part of its history, our pier also hosts a lot of other people. They thought it might be nice if there was an area on the pier that was reserved for non-fishing, perhaps seating areas in that central bulb-out area. While the restroom and the rehabilitation of the restroom is the city's responsibility, they suggest that we take on some projects on the interior or also perhaps some blade signs out front, things that could add some interest and also make the bathrooms more obvious and usable for the public. They suggest that there are some things that could be done to the snack shack. The rather unattractive metal security doors can be handled differently. They can be painted with interesting signage, and I'm sorry to use this word tonight, murals, to add some interest down in the pier area. They've also suggested to the owner, or I'm sorry, the current concessionaire, some interesting ways that he can involve more people in the pier. And then some game areas can be added by simply painting the tops of the existing tables and having the checkers or other game pieces handed out by the concessionaire. And then this is one of the activities that -- or one of the improvements that I think is most interesting. This is very simple and inexpensive, but by painting the central area at the end of the pier, we could create an entirely new recreation area without interfering with our fishermen. So for example, in the morning, there could be yoga classes there in that area, or on special summer evenings, there might be movie nights. So giving that area a use that is not just limited to the edges of the railings. And also around the edge of that painted area could be benches that would allow people to sit and watch the sunset, because it's difficult to do that when you lean up against the fish bait on the edges of the pier. And then finally, working with the fishermen to create activities that can involve more people in fishing at the pier. In fact, we're sponsoring a fishing derby this month. I believe it's on October 21st. And then also appointing an ambassador among the fishermen to help educate the fishermen about how to better care for the pier and not dispose of the kelp on the deck of the pier or their bait. So that brings us to Zone 2, which is one of the areas that we think is going to be of more interest to the Planning Commission. I'm going to provide these concept drawings to -- there's one for you as well, Amber, to the Planning Commission so that you can get a good look at this particular drawing, which for those of us who are visually challenged is a bit hard to do from the slide. So the first thing -- I'm sorry that I'm -- let me just -- I'm just going to use the keyboard. All right. So the existing conditions down at the pier tend to focus visitors on the at-grade crossing. The stairway leads right down to it. The more attractive paving leads straight to that at-grade crossing. The stairway that those of us who've lived here a long time tend to use for safe crossing is not very apparent to visitors, so few people use it. And also, a lot of people don't like to use it at night because it's dark and, you know, a little uncomfortable for us to use. So they focused on looking at a way to encourage people to use this crossing and also add to the attractiveness of the area. Oops, sorry. So going back to that, those historic images that I called to your attention as I brought up the first few slides, this is when you're standing at the pier, and notice how different this looks when you look down at the pier. There's really very little line of sight. It's not part of the original design of the pier, for you to have it obscured by both landscape, the lighting fixtures, and many of us didn't know that this is actually the fishermen's signage. You don't even really see this sign, but yet it obscures your view of the pier. So they focused some of their efforts on opening up this line of sight and creating a more obvious path of travel. So the paper I just handed out to the Planning Commission is a rough concept drawing of some changes that might be made in this area that would change the path of travel. So you'll see, for example, starting with number 5, that's a realignment of the crosswalk, so it goes straight to the underpass at the pier. Then you'll notice number 1. Number 1 is a new set of stairs, a grand staircase, that would reach between the two existing staircases and go straight into the underpass area. I believe it's number 2. I wasn't kidding. I am visually challenged. Number 2 is a suggestion of increasing the art installations that go through the underpass and also increasing the lighting, making the lighting more attractive and more appealing as you go through that area. You look over in, I think it's number 6, that's up at the top of the screen. That would be a change in the stairway so that rather than funneling people straight to the at-grade crossing, it would move them more across into the sidewalk area and then to that grand staircase. Similarly, number 4, and I believe number 3, are landscape and signage improvements that would contribute to that same goal. Some of the numbers are just letting you know that, for example, the bus stop would stay in the same area. They've suggested that we work to move the MetroLink visitors, you know, to the staircase as well. I think that's number 8. So this is a concept drawing that they have -- oh, and I'm sorry, very important. Number 10, which is this area right here. Currently, this is the asphalt that stretches between the stairway and the pier. What they're suggesting is, in order to encourage people to return underneath the underpass when they've, you know, spent some time on the pier, that we pave that asphalt area with something that replicates the same look as the wooden planks on the pier, and that gives people a sense that the pier is continuing, and they follow that path of travel to the safest crossing. So this is, at this point, just a concept, but it's something we think will enhance the pier, not just from a safety perspective, but also from a landscaping perspective. You could see they're suggesting in Area C and D, those are some of the landscape improvements that we talked about. Also lowering, if you look at A, that's lowering some of the shrubs that have gotten quite tall in that area into something that doesn't obscure your view of the pier, and also doing some improvements over in the area marked B. You could see up here a little closer, some of the potential signage that they're suggesting, nice stucco walls in our Spanish colonial style, directing people over to the underpass, and also providing some signage for the fishermen as well in a place that would not block the view of the pier as the current signage does. So then that brings us to the pier skirt and amenities. The pier skirt is this -- you see it on this left-hand side. They're suggesting that we pave this area in something that's much more attractive and in keeping with our city's culture and personality, something that is -- there would be drivable paving stones of some type. And then, of course, in the center is that crossover area that mimics the pier planks. So it's very important to create a sense of arrival when you're in that area, and it also unifies all of the various buildings and amenities in that area by having, you know, one singular type of hardscape. Kind of the theme for this area for them was fresh and clean, and they want to make sure this area has a very welcoming feel. So you'll notice that they're suggesting perhaps that we make some changes around the shower areas, putting in walls, and they're suggesting Spanish colonial revival. This is something that Chair Brown brought up at the stakeholders' meeting. You know, the pier style, of course, is maritime. However, the most recent addition to the skirt area or the base of the pier, which is the new bathroom area, was done in Spanish colonial revival. So their assumption was that the base of the pier would be done in Spanish colonial revival, and anything on the pier would be in maritime. That's obviously something that would be very important to get early direction from the Planning Commission on. They've also suggested some public art in the area. Many of you have visited Huntington Beach, which has, you know, a sculpture of a famous surfer. Santa Monica has the dolphins. Many other surf communities have whale tails and other types of sculptures that are somewhat interactive. People who are visiting love to pose with them, and perhaps ultimately, our sculpture would also be like the ones in Santa Monica that helped fundraise for pier preservation. Then also, something that they thought was in dire need of attention was our temporary RSVP unit building. And not just the building, but the area around the building. You might be able to tell that this is the handlebars of a bicycle. I think Brenda Miller might be the only person who knows that there are bike racks behind that wall. So we have bike parking at the pier, but it isn't utilized at all today. So some of the things they're suggesting, and this building is just a concept building, they actually lifted it and dropped it in here, so they're not suggesting that this would be the architecture or the configuration of the building, but they're suggesting something that's much more substantial and established, and might even include inside the building some amenities, you know, such as lockers and those sorts of things in addition to the current purpose of the building. And then around the building area, we might have an opportunity for bike amenities that went beyond just the bike racks, but also would include perhaps air and water for the cyclist as well. And then finally, something that we think will be very popular in the community would be surf lockers. Many of you have visited Waikiki and other prominent beaches around the world, and this is something that they offer their surfers, and it's very popular. So this is a bit more for the public than for the Planning Commission, but just to give an idea on what some of the short-term priorities are, we met with city staff and got some input from them, and on things that are within their purview, they suggested we focus our early fundraising on the following five projects. The doubling of the annual pier maintenance, which is already underway. We've already gotten three months of that funded and are seeking sponsors for additional months. The flagpole and banner program, surprisingly, a new flagpole and banners is somewhere around $32,000. That has to do with the fact that it has to be wind-rated. The educational and interpretive signage, to get that started just with replacement of our current signs, is around $60,000. The fishing stewardship that we're already working on is about $8,000, and those very popular surf lockers are around $30,000. So before -- and the longer-term priorities, I think I emphasized as we walked through the presentation. And then finally, I know people at home are pretty passionate about the pier. People ask us all the time, "How can we help support you?" And there are three ways that you could do this immediately. Two are very easy for anyone within the community to do. You can join us down at the pier on October 13th. It's going to be our second annual Light Up the Pier. I think a number of you are aware that lighting up the pier was something we did last year to involve the public in indicating support for the cause of preserving the pier by lining the pier and lighting their cellphones at sunset at a signal from the Casa Romantica. Also, we're asking anybody who wants to support the pier to pick up their cellphone and text SCPIER to 50155 to donate an amount from $20 on up. And then finally, for those with deeper pockets, we invite you to visit pierpride.org to become a sponsor. So at this point, I'd be happy to answer questions from the Planning Commission about some of our plans and to take ideas from you as well.
Not to make it too long, Commissioner Smith, your light's on. Do you have a question or?
Well, I -- Julie, I think those are great ideas, and more power to it. I'm thinking that a master plan ought to be a priority just to put all the pieces together before -- a lot of time is spent on individual things to see how the bigger picture would all fit. I think the sketch is a great beginning, but I think there can be a lot more done. I think a model would be wonderful. You get a model of what this could look like and have it down by the pier. It's all good stuff. And the last thing is, I don't think there's anything wrong with a donation box out there. I think a lot of people would come and put money in that box just because they like the experience, because it is a wonderful place.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith.
Mr. Wu.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. I think it's a great program. A few comments I'd like to make is for the -- to enhance the gateway entry, we have some staircase there, and I'd suggest that we incorporate ramps. On the access, we have steps, but on the side, we also have steps. We should consider the people with their own wheelchair also, as long as we have enough length, and if we provide a ramp, it will be used by more people.
Commissioner Wu, that's something that -- and just to be clear, the drawing you're looking at is an early concept drawing, and these ideas are very helpful for that. In the early stages, they weren't able to find a way to have an access ramp that was able to go underneath the underpass part because of, I believe it was because of the grade and also because of the width of the underpass. So unfortunately, access for wheelchairs would still need to be at the at-grade crossing. But perhaps there's a way that, you know, we can find around that as we explore this further.
Okay. And also, for the surfboard rack, that portion possible to be a -- you know, to be undertaken by some business, because they can apparently reap the investment back over the time.
It's an interesting idea. Perhaps having it be something where there's a small fee for that and having it support it. It's a good idea. Thank you.
Mr. Wu.
Well, you know, I've given you some of my ideas in the past, and you'll probably suffer more of my ideas in the future, but I just wanted to thank you and Puka for the many, many, many hours and work you've put into this over the last year and a half or so and continuing to do that. There's been wonderful ideas brought up. The people you've pulled in, obviously, have done a wonderful job of giving us some great ideas, so thank you, thank you, thank you for making the pier a more beautiful place.
Well, and I do just want to clarify that we're just part of a much larger team of very hard -- well, not much larger, they're actually very small, but they're very -- but they're very hardworking and have contributed in many ways that are beyond our capabilities.
It's a pretty dynamic crowd. There's a whole row of them back there, about five or six rows, and they're the usual suspects you seem to always round up in the city for getting things done, and they're great people.
So let me thank you all very much.
This is a great project, and I support it, and I think you guys are off to a great start. In a way, we are going through a logical approach to things, and thanks to our architectural firm that, you know, volunteered their time, and so I think it's -- we're off to a great start, and we've got some good hands on top of it, with good fingerprints on it, so thank you for coming. Great.
Thank you very much, Chair Brown. Thanks, Amber.
Okay. And with that, we'll get into the regular part of the meeting that -- okay. With that, Section 5 Minutes, we need to entertain a motion to approve or amend the study session minutes of September 20th, 2017. There's no comment?
There's no comment. I'll move to approve those study session minutes from September 20th.
You have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Smith, motion to approve by Rowland. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
One exception. I was absent from that meeting.
Okay. Commissioner Crandall is staying, and Mr. Tally is absent, so it's 5-4. Five in favor of. Okay. Now to approve the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting of September 20th, 2017. Is there any comments or corrections, or is there a motion?
So moved.
So Commissioner Rowland moves to approve. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Blackwell. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. It passes 5-0 with one exception and one absentee. Oral and written communication now. Members of the audience may address the Commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city but are not on our agenda this evening. If you wish to speak, please step forward to the microphone, state your name, city of residence. of residence, and make a presentation, and please limit your presentation to three minutes. Item secretary, do we have any cards for item six?
No.
Okay. There are no items on our consent calendar, and so we'll move to the public hearing process and, uh, which, uh, normally there's a time limitation for applicants of ten minutes and all other speakers, three minutes. The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant, and public testimony. To facilitate the meeting for all attendees, the public is asked to limit their individual presentations to three minutes. Following closure of the public hearing, the planning commission will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. With that, we'll go to item eight, eight A, two thirty Avenue de Granada Cultural Heritage Permit sixteen three oh four Alvarez remodel, and we have a staff recommendation that we continue the item for, till October eighteenth. Do I have a motion to continue item eight A? So moved? Second. Motion, innocent by Commissioner Crandall, and a second by Commissioner Wu. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It passes six zero. With that, we'll move to item B, five oh four North Avenue de la Estrella. Amendment to discretionary sign permit eleven dash five oh nine Valero Service Station. Ms. Vasquez waiting patiently all this time.
Thank you. Good evening, planning commissioners. I'm Amy Vasquez, and I'm the project planner for item eight B. The project site is located at five oh four North Avenue de la Estrella, and it is directly west of the I-five freeway. On April third of two thousand thirteen, the planning commission approved a request to reconstruct the Valero Service Station to accommodate an expanded convenience store, a new car wash, and a master sign program. The master sign program included a requirement that the pole sign, as shown in this slide, be removed.
Hmm?
The master sign program also included freeway-oriented wall signs that would be located on the tower elements of the new service station building. The applicant is proposing to delete this sign, these signs, from the master sign program. The California Business and Professions Code, section fifty-four ninety-nine stipulates that local jurisdictions do not have the authority to require the removal of onsite advertising if topographical constraints impair the business from communicating with the public. The community development director has determined that removal of the pole sign would violate this state code. So in summary, the action before the planning commission this evening is to amend the master sign program simply to eliminate the wall signs that are freeway-oriented. The applicant is here this evening, has reviewed the staff report, and agrees with the conditions of approval, and staff is available to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions of staff at this time?
We should probably state that we got-
I was gonna do that.
revised condition.
I was gonna state that we do have complete revised conditions of approval that were handed out by the staff planner before the meeting started.
Thank you.
Uh, with that, uh, is there any other questions of staff? I believe, uh, the applicant wants to make a comment, Mr. Garrett, uh, Leonard?
Hi, good evening, commissioners. I'm Jarrett Goran from Vanguard Planning, and I represent the applicant here, Mehdi Gassemi, and, um, I mean, we don't have a whole lot to add to what staff said here. Um, uh, we're looking forward to getting the whole sign issue sorted out so that we can bring this project forward. I think it's gonna be a major aesthetic improvement to that corner. It's sort of a gateway corner, and, uh, we're looking forward to proceeding on with the rest of this project. Thanks.
Uh, any other questions of the applicant?
I do.
Yeah.
Um, on page three of the seven, uh, this image, uh, you propose to paint the existing high-rise post structure in a cabinet of sky blue. Uh, this is a part of this revised, uh, master sign program?
No, it, the, to, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Wu, um, the pole sign is, is just, it's outside of the sign program. It's covered by the government code, section five four nine nine, so it's just sort of peripheral to all this. Our sign program, what we're, the change to our sign program from what's currently approved is to eliminate three signs that are on that tower element, which, um, currently are inconsistent with your new sign ordinance. We'd be removing those because the pole sign is serving that purpose, and, and we don't need the other freeway-oriented signs.
Well, I understand the pole sign is going to stay, but are you going to change the pole sign by painting more blue color to the cabinet and the pole?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Wu, no, we're not, we're not proposing any changes to that pole sign. Those are just the colors of the sign.
Well, that's what the drawing shows.
Okay, well, we're not proposing any changes to the existing pole sign, just to be clear.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Smith, do you have a question of the applicant?
I do. Uh, you mentioned that, uh, you were gonna reduce the signage on the tower element, and yet the elevation sketch there that you're showing us has a sign up there. Is that gonna be, uh, remaining? Are you knocking the signs off the other sides, or what exactly do you mean by that?
And Mr. Chair, Commissioner Smith, um, the sign that you see on the tower elevation there, that faces Avenue de la Estrella. There's three other signs. You can see them in this rendering here. Um, there's, there's two signs on the sides of that tower and one on the back, which face the freeway and the exit ramp, and we're proposing to eliminate all three of those.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you for coming.
Okay, thank you.
With that, we'll, uh, open up the public hearing, and we have, uh, Mr. Lori Gooch, I think, that wants to talk in this, followed by Mr. John Dory, Mr. Jim Nielsen, and Alex De Good. Go ahead.
Um, dear planning commissioners and members of the public, I hate pole signs.
Can you get your microphone right down a little?
I hate pole signs, and I'm the first to say get rid of them all, except for this one, because of its unique location. On the outskirts of the business district, next to the freeway, stands the existing and established Valero pole sign, out of the way, not in any resident's sight long. The Valero gas station occupies a unique location as well, hidden from motorists driving south on the I-five freeway, hidden until the last moment when it is too late for motorists to safely and timely exit Apalizada. Removing the pole sign creates a public safety issue as impetuous motorists careen off the freeway to patronize Mr. G's station while prudent motorists simply drive by, depriving Mr. G and our city of revenue. Pole signs may be visual blight. However, the business dictionary's definition of a blighted area is an area in which most buildings are abandoned or in severe disrepair. Mr. G aims to improve his building. His proposed Spanish colonial revivalist station forwards Ole Hansen's dream of one town, one architectural style. By improving his building, Mr. G serves as an impetus to surrounding business owners to improve theirs. Generosity is probably Ole Hansen's most notable character trait. He donated the beach club, the community center, the pier, and what is now Maxburg Park to the residents who came before us and to us for our use today. Like Ole Hansen, Mr. G donates to the residents of his time by supporting the friends at San Clemente Beaches, Parks and Recreations, youth programs, and recreational scholarships. I urge each of you to approve Mr. G's application. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Mr. John Dory.
Good evening.
Good evening, John.
My name is John Dory, and I'm a resident of San Clemente. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to come down and praise, uh, a great project. We have eight gas stations in town, and they, they all basically look the same. Um, they're gonna get older and older and older. This sets a new standard, I think, as we start to look at those projects, uh, in the future. And I know that, uh, you've worked on this a long time. Um, if you look at what is there compared to what the original looks like currently, it's night and day. It, it, um, will be the, uh, project that when other people come forward to this work, to this group and want to change their, uh, their format, you have something that you can put in front of them and say, "This is the standard. If you want to, if you want to, um, improve your gas station, this is what we're looking for." And if you, if you say no to this project for any reason at all, then you've eliminated that opportunity. Um, I think this, this is a, the way the community needs to focus. This is their direction it needs to go, and I understand that this community has an issue with signs. Um, it's been going on for a long, long time. But you can't take that opportunity, uh, away, uh, from this gentleman who's gonna spend a lot of money to develop, uh, a, a great asset for our community and point to a sign and say, "Well, we're not gonna do this because of this," or "We're not gonna do something because of that." Take this opportunity and approve it. Uh, it'll be a great addition to our community, and, uh, thank you for your time.
Thanks, John. With that, Mr. Jim Nielsen.
Uh, I'm gonna follow a little bit of what Mr. Dory said. We're talking about a sign that's been in place for fifty years. I've, I've never spoken to a body like you, but as I've read through the paper, all the trouble that's been given because of that pole sign, and it, and it occurred to me, we're talking about somebody who's gonna raise sales taxes twenty to thirty percent because of the new amenities. Uh, the property tax alone is gonna quadruple that he's paying the city for this. Uh, he's, to my knowledge, he's complied with all the requests of, uh, building and planning and scaling back the size of the actual establishment, the perimeter landscaping. Uh, I've, I've known Eddie personally for five or six years. He's been very generous with the Friends of San Clemente, donated every year, I believe every May, he does a penny a gallon, and, and, and over the last five years, he's given the Friends over thirteen thousand dollars, which has all gone straight into the Fund on the Run program that Park and Rec, uh, has, that takes, uh, nutritional recreational amenities out to the, uh, income, lower-income areas, so it's been a godsend. I know he's been involved in FAM and in a number of, uh, local church projects as well. So like Mr. Dory, I, I recommend this be approved. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Mr. Alex De Good?
No comment. Thank you.
No comment?
No comment. Thank you.
With that, we'll close the public hearing. If there's no more cards, then enter into discussion. Mr. Crandall?
I just have a quick one, and I apologize for not bringing this up, uh, when we were first reviewing this. On the resolution, and I agree with the resolution, I'll say that right up front, on item E, uh, it reads there are topographical and unique characteristics that apply to the site, and retention of the sign pole has better communicative values than signs that would be allowed under the municipal code. Um, would it be prudent to include the fact that those characteristics comply with the five four nine nine rather than just making us, that's the criteria we're using rather than arbitrarily just saying, "Hey, we're gonna, um, do something other than what the municipal code says"?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, that's certainly, uh, a possibility, an approach we could take. It's not necessary, um, but as a more conservative approach, it's a bit of belt and suspenders. If the commission wants to add that language, um, we could, we could certainly add that language. There's no problem with that.
And the reason I would mention that, it just seemed like this might set a precedence where they're saying, "Well, you didn't mention the five four nine nine,"
Mm-hmm.
"And you were making..." So if you could come up with just something that mentioned that, that that was the basis.
I could agree to language. I could agree to language on that. That's a very good catch. Um, Commissioner Wu?
Uh, yes, and I'd like to confirm with you that, uh, by saying retention of freeway-oriented pole sign, uh, they can have a, a copy, but not to change it to that.
The, they can, yes, a change of copy would be allowed on that, but no, they can't redesign the pole sign.
Right, because, uh, I, I only want to bring this up because this drawing shows that the cabinet and the pole will be painted as a, a sky blue, so, but the applicant just confirmed they're not going to change anything. So I wonder if that's something we wanna, um, you know, I will, I will support this, um, resolution, but I want to make sure that, uh, they're not gonna change the design.
Actually, the, the pole sign is, is not even a part of our resolution. That's been determined administratively by the city attorney and, and the community development director.
The resolution says that the retention of the freeway-oriented sign, so it's even like, it's even angry.
Okay. Good point.
Um, just, well, now, some, coming up with some fervor. Uh, even under our, uh, maintenance ordinance for sign poles and the like, they'd be able to paint?
Yes, painting would be a regular maintenance.
Okay. Mr. Wu?
Yeah, just, uh, just so I can clarify, per Commissioner Wu's comments, I know that this, um, what was that Latin word you used?
Voedanische.
Voedan, right, so the, um, I won't try to repeat it. So when, the basis of this is, is we aren't even considering the sign, because before our ability to consider it was, was incorrect, and we're only talking about removing those two wall signs. That's the whole point of this. So if that's the case, is there any reason for the mention, any mention at all of pole signs, topographical, that sort of thing?
It's a good question, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Um, the finding that has been previously discussed in sub-E is not technically necessary. It's there to ensure that the, the public and we understand exactly what's, what's going on here. Um, it's not required. I think it's a good idea to have it in there, but the pole sign, as has been discussed, is not part of this application.
Okay. Mr. Blackwell?
Then with that in mind, uh, why don't we discuss revision to the entire heading for the resolution? It's the last sentence. Or the last portion of it.
Again, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, um, so as to give complete notice to anybody who's reading the resolution, well, that's not, um, an action being taken by the commission. I think it, I think it makes sense to include that language here so that we know exactly what, what went on with this resolution. It's not necessary, but it's, uh, an approach that could be taken to be fully transparent.
Okay. Probably very good advice, be fully transparent, and add the other stuff, the other addition to, uh, for item two, I think it is. Uh, is there any other discussion other than the wording? Okay. Uh, go ahead.
Okay. I make a motion to adopt the resolution of planning commission of the city of San Clemente. A resolution of the planning commission of the city of San Clemente approving a revised resolution number PC seventeen point zero one, a resolution of the planning commission of the city of San Clemente approving amendment to discretionary sign permit DSP one one dash five zero nine, a request to amend a previously approved master sign program consisting of the removal of freeway-oriented sign, wall signs, and the retention of a freeway-oriented pole sign for Valero Service Station located at five oh four Avenue de la Estrella.
Second. We have amendment? We have to get a, some words in there for item E, I think it is?
Uh, as-
Sorry. We'll close the discussion.
So as, as discussed, um, for, for finding, uh, in section two, um, finding E, I would recommend the following language added at the commencement of that paragraph, as stipulated by, uh, the Business and Professions Code, section five four nine nine, comma, "There are," et cetera, et cetera.
Okay.
With the revision of this city planner, uh, city attorney just stated.
Okay, so a motion by Commissioner Wu with the wording provided by the assistant city attorney?
I'll second it.
You second? By who? By, who, who second? Wu? I'm Smith. Thank you. Sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes six zero. Congratulations. Ruhl? I'm Smith. Thank you, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 6-0. Congratulations. Item 104 Loma Lane, conditional use permit 16393, Loma Lane Boarding House. Mr. Wright, how are you tonight?
It's not in there. Good evening, planning commissioners. Christopher Wright, project planner. While this gets pulled up, while this gets started. So, this is a request to continue a boarding house that's existed at a property at 104 Loma Lane since 2010, in 2009, sorry. It's a two-bedroom house, and the proposal is to have eight people in the house and two bedrooms. And this boarding house is also to provide services, so this has a program associated with the house to provide care, a variety of services for the people that live there that are described in your packet in more detail. Some of those services include funding for transportation and various forms of care. There, they also provide a form of employment behind the site, and there is, okay, this works out. Okay, so, the operator is Joshua's House, it's the name of this boarding house, and like I described to you, there is a service program description in your packet that gets into detail. The zoning ordinance requires two parking spaces for this use, one parking space per bedroom, and that is provided in the back of the property. So, I have a picture here that shows the location. So, to the left of this site, which is in circle with the green line there, is a two-story bedroom, two-story house. On the right is a six-unit apartment building. There's a residence on the other side of Loma Lane, and then you're going to see on the backside is a parking lot that is between, a parking lot and an alley between the property and the 500 block of El Camino Real. That includes a variety of uses back there. Staff supports this application for several reasons that I'm going to get into. So, first, we consulted with the co-compliance division and the sheriff's department on this to get a feel for the way that this house has operated for several years, and we were told that there has not been a pattern of compatibility issues based upon the activity that's been reported over the years or observed in direct connection to this facility. There's been, when there has been, some minor complaints reported. The operator has shown an ability to work closely with the staff to respond, and that overall shows an ability to provide a compatible use consistent with the general plan. So, that's a compelling reason that staff's supporting the project. Another is that the site is uniquely suited for this use, given that it's in the RM zone. When the city council had adopted an ordinance in 2016 for boarding houses, it had recognized in a higher-density residential zone, it is designed to accommodate more housing units, more people, and the types of land use impacts associated with that. In this location, the site is in close proximity to transit, the freeway, and commercial services. So, that is part of it, also being adjacent to the commercial zone. There's typically more traffic activity and just activity in that zone that has higher ambient noise levels to mitigate or to make any noise associated with activity in the backyard audible. So, that's something that also to bring to your attention. Besides that, there's a variety of requirements this house has to meet. So, one of those requirements in the zoning ordinance, there has to be a 300-foot buffer rule that was put into the ordinance. This is the first application that the city is formally receiving, and the idea behind that 2016 ordinance was to provide in place a way for the city to impose conditions of approval on uses like this that previously were operating without a review process. So, this is a means to add conditions to a use that had previously, has been operating for some time. Additionally, a house management plan has been worked on with the applicant and co-compliance staff with a number of operational requirements that the house would be obligated to adhere to. It would be required to be posted in a visible location to residents, and the community development director would need to approve that. The use permit would not be valid until that plan was approved, and it includes a number of things like curfew hours, that no more than 12 people could be there during daytime hours, and then beyond that, the eight residents, like I described to you, would be able to reside on the property, that there would be a house manager present, so one of the residents would be in charge to monitor the operations of the facility. And there's a number of other things that are in there, like a good neighbor policy. So, all that considered, staff supports this application with the ability to meet the required findings. That concludes my presentation.
Any questions of the staff presentation by the commissioners at this time? Mr. Crandall.
You somewhat addressed it already. On the conditions of approval seven, the house manager shall reside on the premises and oversee the residence. When I first read that, I thought that was in addition to the eight residents.
No.
Should we make that clear? Otherwise, I know on other applications of different uses, if there's an employee or a manager or whatever on site, we require a parking space. So, do you see any?
Are you comfortable with that wording?
Because it doesn't say it is one of the eight in that condition.
Yeah, why don't I go to the conditions?
It's exhibit A, page, I guess it's the second page.
Oh. Yeah, that's, we put including the onsite, a total occupancy of eight, and then we put including the house, onsite house manager. Do you want to take the parentheses out?
Where's that?
So, that's condition number four in exhibit A.
Okay, I was looking at item seven.
Okay.
I think total occupancy, including, okay, they kind of contradict each other.
Okay. Four is okay.
Kind of supersedes it.
Okay. Commissioner Ruhl.
Yes, you mentioned, I like this turn of phrase, "No pattern of compatibility issues," and I wondered if maybe there's some, if you have any concrete information, like are there, have there been any complaints or issues? Have any of them been major over the years that this has currently been here? Do we know that information?
There have been some complaints reported occasionally that have been limited to, in particular, that was brought to our attention, is on one occasion, there was a report of some unpermitted work done to the house. So, they had to get a building permit to correct that issue, make sure that it complied with the building code. Additionally, there was some weights being used, that with the clinking of the weights, there was some noise from that. So, the house operator had informed the people that they needed to lift weights elsewhere. So, that's an example.
Okay.
But there's been no, staff hasn't been told of any major issues over the years or a pattern of particular issues that have not, that have demonstrated a problem that can't be remedied through working with the city.
Okay, good, thanks. And the other question I had was, is there a reporting requirement that they have, like we have with the STLUs? Are they required to report to send out a notice to neighbors within 300 feet or anything like that, letting them know if they're opening a boarding house like we do with vacation rentals?
No, this public hearing serves in that way. They have to.
Oh, because you don't need a conditional use permit for those, so.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Ray, I put mailing. A question now, this house has been there for nine, eight years, I guess it is?
Since 2009.
Okay, and has it, the capacity of the house been eight people during that time?
That's my understanding, that the operator is here. If you can answer that question.
Basically, eight people in this house for eight years has been operating in this fashion for some time. Okay. Does this, do these people in this house qualify as a certain category, class, is protected by ADA and the fair housing practices, similar to some of the other issues we took up with this boarding house ordinance at all?
I'd like to defer that to the city attorney.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, I don't know the type of people who will be at this boarding house. If they include recovering addicts, then that is certainly a class that is protected, and the commission cannot base its determination on any application, whether a boarding house, a single-family home, an apartment, on those considerations, on the kind of person who may or may not be residing in the home. So, again, I don't know who will be living here. If it does include recovering addicts, they are certainly protected by the ADA.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Blackwell, you have a question?
Yes, Chris, exhibit four of the resolution is the narrative for boarding house that you wrote. In the first paragraph, last sentence, there's a mention of an assistant. It says, "One resident will act as the house manager, and there will be an assistant house manager as well." Will that also be a resident, or is that somebody that's going to visit?
This is all residents. There's no employees that are there in addition to the eight people.
And because it's two bedrooms, required to have two parking stalls, and there's adequate parking for this use, correct?
Yes, that's what's required, but I should note that the operator provides drop-off and pickups, and they would be required to provide a, one of the operational plan requirements is that they provide a drop-off and pickup plan. So, the idea is that they're, they don't have, they're not supposed to have their own cars for the majority of the stay. Now, as people transition out of the house, it's understood for a little while while they're getting off their feet and they're moving to a different location, they might have a house to pack up their car or whatnot, but they, the people that stay on in the house are expected not to have a vehicle during their stay.
Mr. Crandall.
Under this resolution, we've got, we're basically approving a boarding house. Do you see any other, if the property's sold, the CUP goes with it, do you see any other way it could be used under the CUP that would still comply?
It would have to adhere to all the conditions of approval that are in the resolution, including the house management plan. And the idea, I think it's really important to underscore the idea of this house management plan, because this is not something that the commission sees all the time.
And that's what I wanted the public to hear also. That's why I asked.
The planning commission doesn't see this often. This is, like I said, the first application. So, considering that the ordinance was adopted in 2016, and this is a new use that the commission is evaluating, there is a lot of thought put into how to make sure a use like this is operating in a way that is compatible with the properties around it. And I think what's good is to tell the members of the public, it's usually when you have a condition of approval that the planning commission puts in a resolution, if you want to change that condition of approval, the planning commission would have to change that condition of approval. So, the city would have to initiate a process to come back to the planning commission, which would take time to write up a staff report and do another public hearing. And that would be a slower process, right, to respond if something were to happen and we needed to adjust things. So, we put this house management plan together so that the public, if there is something that we need to hear and they file a complaint, or there is something that we needed to adjust, then that would be the ability to do that. So, it's a document that could be updated in cooperation with the house operator with community development director approval.
Okay. Yeah, the highlights of the management plan here are what house, major subsets of it are house operators defined, house manager, the application of house conditions, occupancy, use of property, company employees, good neighbor policy, curfew, quiet hours, trash, smoking on the premises, discharge plan, and transportation are all the requirements of the management plan, I guess, to there. Okay, if there are no other questions of staff, is the applicant available to make some comments?
Yes, I see you there.
Please come forward.
Great, thank you. My name is Jim Glynn. I'm the pastor of the program, and I just want to thank the planning commission for giving us the opportunity to come and present. And I also want to say, it's been great to work with Chris in this process, and Adam Otamian, and Beverly Thompson, and Zach, I don't know his last name, in engineering. So, the staff has been absolutely phenomenal to work with. So, I'm very appreciative of that. I wanted to just pass out something really quickly that I wanted to be able to share with you. We haven't really used the word recovery home, and that's kind of what we do, although it's very different. I want to say, basically, from the very beginning, if there's one thing that I want you to really remember in this presentation is, is we are not like everybody else, all the other recovery programs in San Clemente. Absolutely not, not even similar, close in any way. So, that's probably been one of our greatest challenges, is just trying to delineate ourselves from what we do. What I'm passing out is, this is a meeting that just occurred at San Juan High School on Monday evening, and the topic is dealing with opioid and heroin addiction and the rising death toll in Orange County. So, that's primarily what we do, is we work with guys in recovery, and we saw a great need to be able to help men, and you'll be able to hear from some of them that are here tonight, of the story of kind of what we've done. Basically, the central focus of what we do is a one-year program. We take guys in, one at a time, accept them into our program, try to pick guys that are from this area. Sometimes we end up bringing in other people because of relationships with folks outside of San Clemente or South Orange County. They're all 18 and older. We work with them to get back on their feet, to deal with the recovery issues. Most programs are 30, 60, or 90 days. One year seems to be, it's still not 100% successful, but it's very, very successful. We have three main components, a spiritual component, work therapy component, and a recovery component. And each one of those, we're trying to help the guys be ready to make a transition back into regular and normal life. The key thing I want you to hear beyond "we're not like all the rest of them" is, is we're totally self-funded. We don't take any money from insurance companies, from any government entity or anything like that. All the funds that we basically use to operate what we do is provided through the thrift store and through private donations. So, this doesn't even cost a family anything to bring one of their sons to get help from us. And our thrift store is located at 510 North El Camino Real, which is directly across the alley. And when we get to the transportation thing, I'll explain more about that, how that's really a positive for what we do. The third thing I want to say is, we're a family and not a business, and you're going to hear that probably from some of the people we're going to share tonight. We bring these guys in, we're not doing it for the money. We're doing it because we want to help men make it. And this is not an easy thing to be involved with. It's a hard fight to see someone delivered from the powers of drugs and/or alcohol. And it takes a lot of energy from the folks that are involved in leading it. And for the guys that we look at them that are in the program, they're like family. They come to our homes, I meet with them regularly. We seriously take what we do as far as helping the guys to make it very, very seriously. One of the other things we do is for all the guys that are in the program, when they come, normally they have issues. Sometimes they have DUI schools to attend, they have court appearances, court fines. We help them get caught up in all that stuff. If they have child support payments they're behind on, we help them get those caught up. If they don't have a driver's license, we help them get their driver's license. On the other side, if they haven't graduated from high school, we help them get their GED. We have guys that we help actually, after a while, after they reach a certain part of the program, they attend Saddleback College. We also help them to reconnect and reconcile with their family members, because a lot of them, after maybe being out on the street or in different situations for a long period of time, they've alienated themselves from their family. So, we work hard on getting them back with their family, which is also very important in helping them to stay on the path of sobriety for the future. The next thing is, is they all work at the thrift store. That's how this whole thing works. So, it's free, but they come and work in the store, so. So there are cashiers, they sort the clothes, they hang the clothes, they price the clothes, they're experts on antiques and whatever, they know all these different things, and they stock the store, they drive the truck. They've made, since we opened, we opened in May of 2009, so we're about eight and a half years old. And I've watched the store operate better and better and better, and it's because of the collective intelligence of these guys. They put it to good use and really make a difference at the store. Working at the store also does two other things. It gives them a good work ethic, because maybe some of them haven't had jobs before. And it also, it connects them well with the public. And as I meet with the guys every week, and one of the things they tell me is that working at the store also helps them, because a lot of other programs, you're inside for 36 to your 90 days, kind of in this little bubble, and you go back out and you have to face the world. At the thrift store, they're interacting with people, there's temptation that comes into the store that they have to deal with and say no to. So they learn how to live a clean and sober life in the midst of the real world, so there's no, there's no kind of fakeness about it or pretend about it. The other thing that we do is, we have, we call it the fresh start program. So when they reach the end, or getting close to the end of their 12 months, we help them find a job, we give them money to buy a car, usually $2,500 to $3,500, so they can buy a good-use car, because one of the things we learned, we didn't do that at the very beginning, but we learned over time that without a car, they weren't going to get a job. Without a job, they were just going to go in a giant circle and go all the way back again. So we help them buy a car. We have a second phase home in San Juan Capistrano. We have two guys to a room, it's a four-bedroom house, but they can rent, they can share a room there for 500 bucks a month, that includes utilities. And that also helps them to take the next step forward, because most of them couldn't afford to do it without that, and they can stay there for up to a year. So basically, we were offering a total of two years of walking alongside of these guys and helping them move into the future. So, which again, we found has really made a huge difference. And even beyond that, if any of them ever need help, they know where to come. We help them as much as we possibly can, because we want to see them make it. And finally, our neighborhood relationships, and there's a number of neighbors that are here tonight that we'll be able to share with you, but in our eight and a half years, we actually only got one complaint, and that was from the workout machines, the weight machines. And the second we got the complaint, we removed the weight machines, and we got the guys' memberships at San Clemente Gym. So they walked down, and that's where they, that's where they go and work out in order to deal with that noise. The unpermitted room was from 1970, and Beverly was there one day and looked at it and says, "You know, I'm not really sure if this is a legit room," so that's where that came from. So it wasn't anything that we did. And regarding parking and cars, because that's one of the, I mean, most of the neighbors on Loma Lane, except for the ones that are very close by, they didn't even know we were there until they got the letter for the public hearing. None of our guys have cars, so we're not taking up parking spaces on the street. The two parking spaces are in the alley behind the store, and they don't need a ride anywhere. They wake up and walk across the alley and go to work. Now, at night, some of them do go to church or recovery meetings or whatever, and they just use the two vehicles that are parked right there in the alley. So literally on Loma Lane, we have no impact to the parking there. And then also, as far as good neighbors is concerned, and I think this is a huge one, and I know it's very important to the city, is we don't have that many guys leave the program. Most of them, they come, they stay. We have, every once in a while, we'll have a guy that'll slip up and use again, and every once in a while, I'm going to say like, once maybe every 12 months or even longer than that, we'll have a guy that'll just decide to end up and leave. So it's very minimal guys that leave, and whenever they do, we take them someplace. We have other programs that we work with. So if we catch a guy using, we don't just kick him out, we try to get him back into the system. And you'll hear from one of the guys tonight, who on the third time around made it through. So we don't just push anybody out on the street. There's been maybe one or two that just have refused any kind of help and just have stayed here. But most of those, we end up helping in the long run to get someplace else. So I know that's a concern for the city, it's a concern for all of us, that we don't want a giant buildup of homeless because they've come here for a program, and that's definitely not the case for what we do. And I'm going to say, this has been probably, we started this, we got, we got a 30-day cease and desist letter September 30th of 2016. And Halloween night, I brought the application for the boarding house permit to Chris, and he was trying to get home to his kids. Do you remember that?
No.
I do, okay. Because I got it in by the hair of my chinny-chin-chin. And I'm going to say that was hard, because I've never done that before, site plans, floor plans, fire escape plans, all the things that we worked on. But the hardest thing for me was not knowing if we're going to get this, and what I would tell the guys, if we couldn't get this boarding house permit to keep them there and to help take, take care of them. So that's why, not for me, but for them, I'm asking for your approval of our conditional use permit request. Thank you.
Any questions of the applicant? Mr. Wu.
Yes. Well, your program is a one-year program.
Yes.
And just said there are not a lot of turnover among the people. In the last 12 months, first of all, how many people are there living in the house right now?
Eight.
Eight.
Yep.
In the last 12 months, how many people have stayed in that house?
How many people have stayed in the house?
Right.
Eight? I mean, or do you mean people that have come and gone, or?
Yeah, people, people, there's a turnover, turnover.
Right, we've had, I'm going to say, in the last 12 months, two. How many, three?
Graduate.
Oh, oh, graduate? Oh, geez, almost all of them graduate.
How many people have lived in that house in the last 12 months?
Man, I can't really say. I know we've lost a few guys. Then we graduate, most of them move to San Juan, and then we bring in somebody else. We always have a waiting list. So I'm going to say, we've probably graduated this year, probably four, maybe five. We have another, we have another two or three that are probably going to graduate before the end of the year.
And it's some just to drop it out by themselves?
So we, probably this year, we've caught one or two guys that have used, because we do drug testing, and those guys have, we've taken them to another program. That I know of, in the last 12 months, we've had no one just leave the program and just be on the streets of San Clemente.
You kicked out two, okay.
Uh-huh, yes.
A total of teen number of people?
How many?
Teen number of people?
A teeny, tiny?
No.
No.
Teen, T-E-N.
In the teens.
Oh, in the teens? Oh, no, not in the teens.
Number, you said.
Oh, no.
Well, there's eight, then some graduated. Okay.
I guess, I guess I'm not following with what number you're looking for. I mean, it's hard, because they all come in at different times, so they, so we have guys coming in, and then we have guys graduating. It's just kind of a constant thing.
Right, it's constantly moving, but I just want to get an idea of how many people ever stayed in this house.
Okay, in the last year, maybe 12?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other question of the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
For my presentation. We have several people want to speak on this tonight. And the first one, by the way, I'd like to acknowledge, we do have letters, one was in our briefing from Mr. John Kennedy, and we have an email from, received and forwarded to us, from Dan Millow and Jamie Millow, and another formal letter, which is also from Jamie and Dan Millow, that was provided to us tonight by the staff, and we have it on the dais. With that, I'd like to call the first person that wants to talk, Jackie Criski and Mike Criski.
Mike's not going to speak, he's closed.
Pardon me, let's close the presentation and open the public hearing, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jackie Criski, and I live at 108 Loma Lane, so we're at this green spot right here. I've been the house's neighbor since 2009. What started as an intent from another neighbor to vex this middle neighbor has turned into a blessing for our neighborhood. The fact, the house has been proactive in dealing with neighborhood issues such as vagrant street, trash, 7-Eleven drug use, vandalism to our properties and cars. They've been very good partners in reducing some of these problems. When we have problems in the alley, we would go to Jim or the house manager to help us with security, to help us keep an eye on things, to help us reduce vagrancy. They've been extremely proactive with us, working with the city and the police department. They're kind and considerate of all our neighbors, and they go above and beyond to ensure that they don't impact us in any way. If there's ever a concern, we go directly to Jim, or we go directly to Miles, and they are more than receptive to any solution and to work with us in any solution. More importantly, they maintain the thrift store in the alley, and that's been the greatest stride of all. The garbage and litter that has been from prior tenants has been reduced considerably. They make sure that dumping doesn't occur. If it does occur, they clean it up promptly. So they're very considerate of that impact of the, of people dumping after hours on the neighbors and residences that live there. The gentlemen that live in the house watch out for our neighbors, are helpful and concerned. They provide a sense of security for us. We have cameras, and we've kind of synced up our cameras for the alley to help with vandalism and the gang-controlled area towards the bottom of the alley. Jim, the owner, is always responsive to our needs and any concerns that are brought to them. It would be, in fact, in my opinion, a loss to our neighborhood if this house were not able to continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Caleb Haas, followed by Devin Fitzgerald.
Hi, my name is Caleb Haas. I am a resident of San Clemente and a disciple at Joshua House, and I have been a disciple since December 16th of 2016. I grew up in San Clemente. Since I was three years old, I went to Lobo Elementary School, Bernice Hare Middle School, and San Clemente High School. And I made some bad decisions when I was 16, working at Del Taco or by 9:00, or fell into drugs. I didn't know what to do, I lost everything, and I was just at my wit's end, and I was hopeless. And I found out about Joshua House, and I just couldn't believe that. There was a program in San Clemente that didn't take insurance, that just wanted to help me and not take money from my insurance, you know, and just check me off as a check. And since I've been here, I've been able to reunite with my family. They live down by Ole Hansen, and they've just given me a hope in life. Like, I can actually look at myself in the mirror and not be ashamed at what I've done, but, but to know that I'm a child of God, and just to see that Jim is just so genuine and loving, and he doesn't want anything in return, he just wants to help, and he like, doesn't know any of us, and then he just hears our stories, he just has so much compassion. It's just unreal. I've never met anyone like him. And, you know, we, because of all of this, I mean, I just, I can't even explain where I was 14 months ago and where I am now. It's just incredible. And I just, I can't imagine what this place would be like if it wasn't around anymore. You know, a lot, a lot of people would be very hurt, and I just don't know how that would go. But I just, I can't stress enough on how grateful I am for this opportunity. It's very humbling to be in front of you guys, just considering where I was and where I am now, it's just, it's just insane. So thank you very much for your time.
Good job, thank you. Mr. Devin Fitzgerald, followed by Javier Aguilar.
Good evening. So I am a past resident, a graduate, as they would say. I still currently work at La Tienda thrift store, and I'm currently enrolled at Saddleback. I arrived at Joshua House back in September of 2014. At that time, you know, I, probably six months prior to that, I was actually a homeless drug addict roaming the streets of Orange. I grew up over in northern Orange County. And, you know, I just can't say enough about, you know, what this program has done for me. I've, like I've, he's mentioned, I've reunited with my family. I've been clean and sober now for over three years. Like I said, I've been working and I've gone back to college. I'm actually finishing up my AA and actually transferring here within the next year. So, you know, I can't say enough about Jim and Miles and everyone that's, just in regards to this whole store and this whole situation, it's just, it's a blessing. And the people that I've met, you know, everyone who's associated, you know, all these people here, you know, they're all associated with the store, and they're all just beautiful and wonderful people. And I just couldn't imagine that this house would not be there, and it wouldn't be there for more people and more men like me. I just can't say enough about it. And I just hope you guys can see that, you know, this house is a great thing. It does wonders for the community, and it does wonders for us men, and I just can't stress that enough. Thank you for your guys' time.
Thank you. Followed by Cynthia Shogs.
Hello, good evening. My name's Javier Aguilar, and I am a resident of San Clemente. And I just want to say, you know, that before I was at the J House in 2009 when they opened up, and, you know, I've struggled since I was 13 years old with alcohol and drugs, and was never able to stay sober. And I got into a lot of trouble because of that. And I, in '09, I was, met Jim Glenn, and I was asked to leave because I wasn't, wasn't interested in staying sober. And I've learned through Jim Glenn, you know, about second chances, and, you know, about having hope. And I've learned many things, many acquired tools. I got there on 2013, and he took me to detox in Long Beach. And I came back, and, you know, I was sentenced there after, for a year. I got, picked up my second DUI, and Jim helped me. I started, you know, I acquired tools, like I said, you know, and I started going to certain meetings and acquiring the tools, and because of that, you know, I've, I also got a job there a few months after being there. And today, I still have the same job, and I'm working on becoming management at that, with that company. And all those things are things that I learned, you know, through Jim and the Joshua House and La Tienda, you know. Like he said, you know, the guys work there. I learned the importance of having integrity and doing the right thing, you know, when nobody's looking. I learned how to go to work. And by the way, too, it's the longest I've ever been, been employed, you know, and it's because of the Joshua House, and it's because of La Tienda, you know. I learned through Miles as well, like, you know, how to be responsible, how to, they helped me get my license, you know, how to be self-sufficient, how to pay for my bills, my rent, everything, you know, how to become a man, pretty much, you know. And it's because of examples and mentors like Jim Glenn that I still visit today, you know, after eight and a half years, you know, like he said, it's not like, you know, I just, to me, he's like a, he's a mentor, a father, and a person that I hope to know for the rest of my life, and to, just by a little bit, to be a little bit like him, you know, and other things, oh, sorry.
Cynthia Shogs, followed by Laura Glenn.
I'm going to be very brief, and I just want to say, you have a very, very unique opportunity to allow this to continue. And as a landlord, I rented to Jim Glenn for about eight years, and I have never not once received or heard a complaint from any of the neighbors on either side, behind. I watch this program every day. I live right across the street, next to the Old City Plaza and the Ole Hansen Building, and I can see the progression of what's going on here, and it's a beautiful thing. So I'm very, very pleased to be up here to speak tonight on Jim Glenn's behalf, and I hope that you'll pass this process, because it's a very, very unique program. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Glenn?
I'll pass, I'm his wife, and there's probably other people I need to talk to.
JP Spitz?
I'll second that, I'll pass. I'm so excited about hearing all of these things.
Okay, thank you. Herman Brown. Herman Brown.
Good evening. My name's Herman Brown. I don't live in San Clemente now. I have lived here before, but about eight and a half years ago, God led me over to Joshua House, to Jim Glenn. I've never been, I've never drank alcohol my whole life, I've never done any drugs my whole life, I never smoked a cigarette. So a lot of people ask me, how can I be so close with all the guys that come through, through Joshua House? And I say, it's God's love. For me, it's all God, and I love these guys more than you could, than I can ever express. And I've seen a lot of guys come through, and I never forget them, year after year, year after year. So it's an amazing program. I've, I've helped lots of different programs here in town and, and Dana Point also, in Capo Beach. But I never spend as much time as I spend here because this program is genuine. I have a son-in-law who has a couple houses in Anaheim Hills, and he's like, I can make, you know, of six people, every six people, you make a million dollars. That's all he, all they care about is how much money they can get through the insurance and stuff. You should make a million dollars if you run it right. Jim Glenn takes no money. This program takes no money. It's all self-sufficient, and I'll do everything I can, as long as I'm breathing, to help this program.
Kate or Katie Dom? Excuse me if I mispronounced your name.
Hey, no worries. Hello. My name's Katie Dom, and we live in San Clemente, my husband and I, down at T Street. And we've been associated with the guys at Joshua House for about four or five years, and it, it was an accident, but nothing is an accident in God's plan. And I feel like that this is, our association with Joshua House is one of the best blessings in our lives, and they come to meet at our house once a week for a Bible study. But it's more than that. It's a time where we just share our hearts with each other, and you couldn't ask for a more humble and grateful and genuine group of young men. And I see a transition from the time when they come, and sometimes they can't look out of their sweatshirts, they're covered up, and then they blossom, and their light, their faces shine, and they start a new life, and they start paying off their debt, and they learn how to handle money. And it's just a beautiful process, and we need more hope in this world. People without hope perish. They shoot people in Vegas or wherever they are. People without hope are dangerous. People with hope offer all of us joy and encouragement, and I'd like to encourage you to pass this so that we can continue to have good things happening in our city. Thank you.
Katie?[787.49][787.49](applause) Followed by Terry Dom.
Good evening. My name's Terry Dom. I've been in this city since 1970. I've owned a business in this city since 1970. I have had mentorship and apprenticeship programs in my business. My wife and I recently have adopted all of these boys, every single one of them. As they come through and as they go out, we continue to love them and cherish them. The growth that I see from this particular program is so superior to the education that they get in the public schools. I was a graduate in my master's for teaching, and I cannot see the, the amount of growth in the average school where these kids grow. They, they come in and they're basically babies, and you can watch them just soar. I think this city needs this kind of community atmosphere with, as part of the community. We have people of all walks in this community, and we need people that are willing to extend love and courtesy and hope and education and mentorship to people, all kinds of people. I think this is a model, and I think it can be better and better and better. Also, I think that more of these are needed throughout the country. I think these homes, if controlled as this one is and controlled by private money, by no funding from anybody except the hearts and the belief in the rest of us, can flourish. This is what our country needs. I truly hope that you guys see the benefit of this. I know that if there are going to be minor problems, then we can take care of it. We have a lot of people, a lot of great people behind us, and we just want to continue on grabbing as many of these young, broken hearts and broken souls as we can. So I want to thank you very much for considering this.
Thank you and Terry for your community involvement there. I'm Mr. Bruce Wagner. And after that will be Laura Moore. Hi, Bruce.
Good evening, Bruce Wagner, and I'm a proud resident of your neighbor of Capistrano Beach, the independent republic of Capistrano Beach.[945.43][945.43](laughter) But for the last 30 years, I've had really, my professional life has been here in San Clemente. So I started off in 1987 as your director of Beaches Parks and Recreation, and for the last 12 years, I'm a pastor, a local pastor here in San Clemente. So I can say I've worked with those that are underprivileged, those that are homeless, those that are the least of these amongst our community for those entire years. And dealing with those kinds of issues, homeless, addictions, those types of things, they're challenging and they're messy, and there are no simple solutions. But I can say that the Joshua House program is one of the best I have ever seen, and that's working as a professional here in the public sector underneath you guys as well as a pastor. The program works, and you've seen it work for eight years or more. These, this program is designed around building relationships with these men. It's not, these are not people that just come through and they have no names. They, they have names, there's relationship, there's mentorship that goes on, there's discipleship goes on with each and every one of them. It's one of the major reasons it's so successful. They serve the local community, they serve our local men, so they are integral part of the San Clemente landscape. The goal is to rebuild these broken lives and get these men back on track with the gifts, the talents and the abilities that God gave them. Many churches support Joshua House. Heritage Christian Fellowship, where I'm a pastor, we support this, this program. We welcome these men in our church. They serve and volunteer in our church, and we're proud to have them be a part of our church. I have personally seen men's lives changed for the good. And all of this without any local, state, or federal funds. It's all done privately, completely privately. And I think as a public servant back in the days when I was here from 1987 to 2004, I would have cherished having private funds take care of a major problem in our community. And they do it flying below the radar. They don't, they don't shine flags, they don't raise flags, they don't shine lights, they don't do anything like that. They do it all below the radar. It's free to all the men that, that come to the program. You can't use money as a, they can't say, well, I can't afford it. They're all welcome in the program, free of charge, and their families as well. Well, in my viewpoint, Joshua House is an example of how to do it right, and I think San Clemente can be proud that this organization is here, and I would covet your support for Joshua House. Thank you.
Thank you.[1112.64][1112.64](applause) This is, this is my last card. If anybody else wishes to speak, please fill out a card. This is for Lori Moore. Did I pronounce that right?
Yes, you did.[1126.16][1126.16](music)
Hello, my name's Lori Moore. I live right around the corner from Joshua House at 152 West Avenue to Palazada. I can tell you that I've had a lot of problems in my neighborhood, but never, ever with these wonderful gentlemen, and I consider them all gentlemen. I shop at their thrift store all the time. They have helped me do many, many things around my house. I just purchased my home from my sister who owned it, in her, my, her husband, in the last couple of months, and I am thrilled to have them in my neighborhood. I, I've never had neighbors like this. I've had some people across the street from me that have been problems. I've had people next door to me that have been problems. I have never had one problem with them, and I totally respect and appreciate having them in my neighborhood. I've also helped many of them find jobs when they get done in the program. I trust and respect them and know that they will work hard in any job I've found for them. I have a lot of connections. I work in the senior care industry, and I can tell you, I want to adopt all of them. So I was jealous when you said that. They, they are truly, truly the neatest guys I've ever met, and I'm so proud of all of them for how hard they work to get through this program and become upstanding citizens instead of being on the streets. I just saw a guy laying on the sidewalk, passed out, right next to 7-Eleven today. And I look at him and I compare him to what they're doing, and I am so happy they have a program like this to help people like that. So I, I fully, fully, and I've spoken before, before the city council last year about it, I support them 110%. Thank you very much.
Thank you.[1241.66][1241.66](applause) And the last card for this evening so far anyway is Deanna Allen.
Good evening, and thank you for having the hearing. I would like to express, my name's Deanna Allen. I'm a resident of San Clemente for many years, and I'd like to express my support for the boarding house. I came to know them because I shopped at the thrift shop, and then I gradually became familiar with the young men and the, the gentlemen who work there. And I can say without reservation, they are very kind, compassionate, they are service-minded individuals to not only their brothers, but the community. And the La Tenda Thrift Store does a great service to them in providing that socialization so that we in the community can get to know them, and they can get to know us from many walks of life. I am a pharmacist. I see people who have addiction problems, overdoses in the emergency room in the hospitals I work, and people who have high recidivism rates in and out of recovery and recovery homes. So the programs by and far are not effective. They often rely on prescription psychotropic drugs, and that in turn alters cognition. Here, this program is devoid of prescription drugs. There's a spiritual component which is stronger in my mind, and we see more success with this in other programs. And as I learn more about it, I would like to see this program in some way modeled with its successes and shared with other interested parties. So in my profession as healthcare provider, I, I would like to get to know you better, and I thank you for sharing your stories. Thank you.
Thank you very much.[1396.83][1396.83](applause) That's, that was the last card. Seeing no one else, we have any more cards there, Madam Secretary? With that, we'll close the public hearing and enter into discussion. Mr. Crandall, you have your light on.
I, I want to say I'm inspired. I want to commend everybody who spoke tonight. Each one of you are a graduate or a current member. The first speaker from San Clemente, I think he was, said he was either in awe or humbled by standing in front of us. He doesn't need to. This whole group can stand tall and proud in front of anybody and remember that. We are tasked with making four findings for the Joshua House, and for me, it's pretty easy after what I've heard here. One is the proposed use is permitted in the subject zone. Yes, it is. The site is suitable for this type of intensity in use? Yes. And the easiest to make are the proposed use will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or materially, materially injurious to the properties and improvements in the vicinity from the neighbors. It sounds like it's a benefit to the city and the neighborhood. And also, the proposed use will not be, not negatively impact the surrounding land uses. I am convinced this evening now, after hearing everyone, that it is certainly the case that it's actually beneficial to the neighborhood and the city. So I am in support of this application and commend Mr. Glenn and the Joshua House, and I hope we have more.[1503.21][1503.21](applause)
Yeah, I'd like to make a few comments also. I would like to echo what Commissioner Crandall says. You all can be proud. I'm very impressed with the neighborhood that came and support tonight, and of course, the other mentors who've given their time because they're neighbors of mine. I think it's, obviously, this is a very good program. The findings are very easy to make. This is generally a very sensitive subject because this is a protected class of citizen as we built this whole ordinance that has come before us tonight. Compliment Mr. Glenn and his efforts in also working with the city on this management plan. I think we have a model going forward because we'll have more of these coming forward, and hopefully they'll be, you're leading the path will make this easier for the next ones to come forward with a great example you set for your program and, and the men you help, and then, and of course, for the rest of the city because we have a great need in our society to get this corrected. So I'm, I want to be supportive of this effort, and I appreciate the community involvement here. It's very telling when neighbors come and say, I really like having you people next door. That, that carries a lot of weight. With that, Mr. Blackwell, you've been waiting patiently.
Yes, thank you. Well, it's good to see when a land use goes well. It's, it's not always the case, but in this case, it's, it's working. And uses such as this, when managed and scaled appropriately, are an important component of community development, which is a big part of why we're here. And I think this particular application is appealing even more than what's on paper and the numbers and all that because of the, the human component of it, which is an even bigger part of land use. It's, it's how it works for people. And in this area, recovery, it's, it's touching, and it is great to see it. I support this project, and I thank the operator for being such a positive contributor to our community, and, and I look forward to seeing more projects like this come through.
Yeah.[1642.12][1642.12](applause) Mr. Rude?
Well, first I'll just thank the members of the public for their very warm and moving testimony tonight. We do appreciate it, and especially, you know, with the neighbors, you know, giving us a picture, a better picture of the compatibility of the land use because that's what, that's our job is to figure out, is something compatible? Is it a good, you know, good land use? And, you know, I think we're lucky because, you know, this is the first application we've had for our new ordinance, and, you know, the proof of the pudding is in the eating, as they say, and we've got something here that has shown to be not just compatible, but obviously a very positive impact on its, on its neighborhood. So that obviously makes, makes our job a bit easier. I think, too, that this could be, this kind of, you know, format and looking to the kind of way this, this particular boarding house is set up and maintained, since it is the first one, and it appears to be successful over the last eight years, it could serve to be a template or a model as we move forward. We may not have the history for other applicants that we have with this applicant, so we would want to make sure future applicants, you know, have, have the, are headed for the same type of compatibility success in the neighborhood as, as this applicant is. So, yeah, like I said, I think it's, I think it's proven itself already.
Chris, I'd like to thank you, City Planning, for putting together a good project here.[1738.83][1738.83](applause) And I guess to echo the word of template, I guess the next applicant that comes in the door, have them go see Mr. Jim Glenn.[1749.12][1749.12](laughter) And it probably should be on a desktop procedure in City Planning.[1756.12][1756.12](laughter) Mr. Smith, you want to make something?
Well, this has been an education for me, more like a baptism, I guess, from what I hear.
He needs it.[1770.08][1770.08](laughter)
When I first saw this material in front of me, it raised some concerns and doubts in my mind.
Mr. Smith, you want to make something?
Well, this has been an education for me, more like a baptism, I guess, from what I hear.
He needs it.
When I first saw this material in front of me, it raised some concerns and doubts in my mind, but I didn't know anything about Joshua House. And tonight's been a great education because I've learned a lot about your organization, I listened to the people that are part of that, I listened to your neighbors, and I am so impressed with what I've heard, that my doubts are gone, my support is there. I think it's a wonderful opportunity to continue this house, this program, these people, these neighbors. I just wanted to share with you that we did get a letter from the neighbor who's recently purchased next door, and they raised doubts in their letters to us, and I think that once they get to know you, I think those doubts will melt away. And so it should be something on your agenda to embrace these people when they do arrive. They're out of the neighborhood right now, but they do plan to move in, and I think that you'll change their mind, and I think they'll become wonderful neighbors. So again, I wholly support this. Thank you very much.
Mr. Wu, you want to have a comment?
Oh, yeah. Well, this boarding house has a very good location and is appear to have a good relationship with the business. Boarding houses always sometime raises some concern because people are afraid of it being a place that are transient to use continuously. They come and go on a routine basis, and that creates a problem for the neighborhood. But it's impressive to see that such a wide range of people come here to make those testimonies in support of you. Apparently, you have a very good program, and I appreciate that, and I will be in support of this project.
With that, Mr. Crandall, entertain a mo- Yeah, I would like to make the motion that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution Number PC 17032, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, California, approving conditional use permit 16393, Loma Lane Boarding House, a request to allow a boarding house use with up to eight residents in a two-bedroom residence located at 104 Loma Lane. I have a motion by Christopher Crandall, second by Mr. Ruen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Good luck.
Thank you very much.
And stand by for other people come knocking on your door since we just passed the word there, at least for the template. Okay, we have no new business on our calendar tonight or no old business. Do we have any reports of commissions or staff? I would denote for our, let's see, on the 18th, I'd like to note on our preview, our future agenda here, on the 18th, we'll have, I guess, Avenue de Granada, possibly, and South Elle Community Revolve, these have been continued. We'll have appeals on temporary banners. And we'll have another appeal on the Marblehead Master Sign Program.
We did try to keep that agenda as light as possible, but there, we did try to keep that agenda as light as possible, but unfortunately, we had a couple continuances that we had to put on there, so we apologize.
Can we ask everybody to be quiet and move outside while we continue the business, please? Yep, I'm sorry we couldn't hear you.
I was just saying we were trying to keep that agenda as light as possible, but there were two items that really needed to come forward, so I apologize for that.
So these are both appeals on, one is on temporary banners?
Yes, there's two appeals that the Planning Commission will be hearing on the 18th of this month, as well as two items. We will not be having a study session, so we will be starting the meeting at 6 o'clock.
So these both, let's see, one is the Marblehead Master Sign Program is an appeal?
That's correct. The appeal is what the applications are going for. You'll get more information on that. It's not for the signs themselves. It's what they are allowed to actually apply for is what's being appealed.
Oh, thank you. I'm assuming we might have City Attorney preparation on this, or are we just going to go beforehand, again, like we did for this meeting, or you can consider that, or you have to think about it?
I would love to work with the chair on a process and a game plan on that and give information.
Okay, I'll get with you. A preparation game plan, that's it. And then also, on the 8th of November, we have a study session, which is History of Marblehead Signage, followed shortly thereafter by Lifetime Fitness Cub, finally, and then Marblehead Signage.
How long did it history before the appeal?
Well, the last time we got an appeal, we got a history. I guess I left it on the dais, which was from the applicant, which went back to 1999 or something like that. Okay, is there any other questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn to the regular Planning Commission meeting to be held at 6:00 PM on October 18th in, 18th?
Mm-hmm. I guess it is, 18th, 2017, in Council Chamber of the City Hall, located at 100 Avenue de Presidio, San Clemente, California. Have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second? Second by Ruen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Passes 6-0. Meeting adjourned. Okay.